Good evening, it's 6:30 on Monday, December the 20th. December the 12th, I want to be Christmas already. 2022, and I now call the Wenton Woods City School Board of Education to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call roll?
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mrs. Coon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Bertie?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Just as a reminder, all of our things that we follow are the specific goals, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive. Before we start our board meeting tonight, though, we have a musical selection for our holiday season from the Wenton Woods Women's Chorale and the Bela Volce, and it's going to be out by the learning stairs. So we're going to exit to the learning stairs, and then we'll come back here after they finish singing.
Yeah, you guys will have a seat on the learning stairs so you can get the real feel of the place. Yeah, exciting. All right?
Okay, all right, so let's go to the learning stairs.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Holidays. I'm Beth Chakowski. I'm the Director of Choirs at Wenton Woods High School, and joining me is Mr. Kress, the Associate Director, also a Wenton Woods alumni. And we're also joined by Mr. David Kirkendall, one of our accompanists. This evening, we have three pieces for you. I have here the Wenton Woods Women's Chorale. That is our beginning women's ensemble, consisting of majority freshman ladies. And then followed by that, here's a piece by Bela Volce, which is our advanced women's ensemble. And then they're going to combine to do one last piece for you. This is not all of the ladies in the ensemble, but I'm very grateful to all of you for taking an evening off to be here and sing for the board. So the first piece that we are going to be doing is called "All on a Cold Winter's Night." You might hear some tunes, "Green Sleeves," or "What Child Is This?" if that is what this piece is based off of. So now Bela Volce is going to be joining us, and they will be doing a piece called "Yale Poo." But I do want to bring up the fact that the Barstie Ensemble just finished up a very, very busy weekend at the Cincinnati Pops for the Holiday Pops with John Morris, Russell, Cincinnati Pops, the Annie Roses Band, and Bernard Holcomb. If you did not get a chance to go to the performance, you can actually watch the livestream of it on YouTube until January 3rd. Just simply type in Cincinnati Holiday Pops, and it'll pop right up. I did post it all over Facebook, Music, Boosters, Barstie Ensemble, so it is all there. They did a phenomenal job. I think we spent about 55-plus hours outside of the school day for the past five days. So they got to rest today. They're a little exhausted. And then they will be performing at the Kiwanis on Thursday evening over at Malloy's on the Green. But they were able to perform for nearly 13,000 people. And with the livestream, during the livestream, there were about an additional 1,200 people streaming all over the world. I think we saw Australia, Japan, Germany.
Brazil.
Brazil, all over the place. And then the directors, we just watched in the back. I almost typed in "from the May Festival rehearsal space in Music Hall." But they did a fantastic job. If you get a chance to see them, please congratulate them. Very, very well-earned respect. And the Pops and Mr. John Morris also were very happy to have us there, and was very happy with everything that they did. So, once again, the oldies. And I love this opportunity to get to show off some of our other choirs, too, because these ladies have worked so hard. And really having the opportunity to combine these voices, you're going to love it at the end. So this is Bela Volce. So this next piece is what we call Mashup, between two pieces, "Mary Had a Baby." And I'll just let you figure out the next one.
Mary had a baby. Mary had a baby. Mary had a baby. The people keep on coming, and the train has gone.
Joyful, joyful, Lord, we adore thee, God of glory, Lord of love. Hearts unfold like flowers before thee, opening to the sun above.
Joyful, joyful, Lord, we adore thee, God of glory, Lord of love. Hearts unfold like flowers before thee, opening to the sun above. Melt the clouds of sin and sadness, drive the dark of doubts away. Giver of immortal gladness, fill us with the light of day. Wanted Mary in him, oh, wanted Mary in him, the prince of peace and Lord of lords. Giver of immortal gladness, fill us with the light of day. Mary named Jesus, yes, Mary named Jesus, the prince of peace and Lord of lords. Giver of immortal gladness, fill us with the light of day. Fill us with the light of day. Fill us with the light of day.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kiwanis, Happy Hanukkah. Just enjoy, families, everything great. Thank you.
All right. We're back from our holiday musical that they gave us, three selections. And the board would just like to say thank you to the high school women's choral and the Bela Volce students under the direction of Ms. Beth Miller and Mr. Alex Kress. So we appreciate the beautiful music that they came and shared with us tonight. And we would like to say to them to have a happy, safe, and healthy holiday. The next item on our agenda is 2.01, which is an amendment to the agenda, item number 903, Personnel Schedule E, to appoint Mr. Randy Seymour to make the recommendation for Schedule E leaves. Board motion will be in order.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Randy Seymour, Treasurer, to make the recommendation for Personnel Schedule E leaves.
I'll second that.
Spin motion a second. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 3.01, which is our District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. I'd like to bring up the first recipient, and that would be Alita? Yes. So, Alita, do you know Mr. Polly? Okay, so Mr. Polly, is Mr. Polly here tonight? All right, well, he wanted to be. So he wrote something amazing about you, and we're going to read it so everybody can just see how amazing you are. "Mr. Polly, Alita's teacher, says that Alita's caring ways truly show through when she made sure a new student felt welcome." He says, "I saw the two in the hallway, and she was showing her the new student how to use the lockers. She even introduced us. The next day, I saw her with the same student at the tech desk helping her get her device. She was always pleasant and respectful toward staff and peers." To the audience, the students are selected for the Kiwanis Character's Key Caring Award based on the following description. "Caring means showing a genuine concern for the feeling of others, showing compassion, understanding, and helping others by using kind words and actions." The Kiwanis Character's Key Respect Award is sponsored by the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, a partner of Wenton Woods City Schools. Students who are honored receive a La Rosa's gift card." So, Alita. Very good. Bring him up for the picture.
So Mrs. Jordan is going to take the picture, so if you could just turn around.
I sat next to that beautiful baby doing the singing. That baby knew every word to every song. Mr. Denny is going to come up because he's representing the Kiwanis group. The next recipient is Wisdom. Wisdom has a very interesting middle name. Pronounce it for me. Prempeh. All right. I think I'm going to change my name to Anthony Prempeh. Sounds very distinguished, doesn't it? So I'm going to read a little bit about Wisdom. "It is with great pleasure that I recommend Wisdom Prempeh Davis as Student of the Month. I've known Wisdom since freshman year. This year, she is a senior in one of Wenton Woods Honors Diploma candidates." Oh, amazing. Yes. "Wisdom has always been one to lead. As a freshman, she involved herself in several extracurricular activities, first being a member, and then she progressed through high school as she became a leader of several groups. One of the proudest moments was watching Wisdom be inducted into the National Honor Society, where she is currently the president. She leads with fortitude." Very good. "She leads with fortitude and is very inclusive in sharing responsibilities with other officers in NHS. Wisdom is also a student ambassador. Student ambassadors are leaders in the school. They act as docents and are called upon to serve on student panels in the school. They act as docents and are called on to serve student panels all over the place. They decorate bulletin boards, work and read to the students in the younger grades, and are always ready and available to showcase the high school. Wisdom is currently the class president where she eagerly delegates assignments to her fellow classmates, and leads by example by always carrying out her duties to the fullest extent. Last but not least, Wisdom is the voice of the Academy of Global Studies." Wow. "She greets her fellow AGS classmates every morning with the announcements and shares news on what is happening globally. Being a senior, Wisdom fills her high school schedule with CCP classes and honors classes at the high school. She recently spent two days at the greatest university in the land. Who wrote this? Miami University. Who wrote this? There, she participated in the Bridges Program with students from around the Cincinnati area. The Bridges Program provides historically underrepresented populations a better understanding and appreciation for diversity, and enables them to engage with the university's current students, faculty, and staff. Wisdom is an exemplary student who is a wonderful representative of Wenton Woods and a young, promising African-American woman who will continue to soar. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to highlight one of our amazing students, Wisdom Prempeh Davis, and that is from the Lower House Counselor, Ms. Kimberly Goins." Come on up for the picture. Wisdom, before you sit down, once you get the picture, I have another assignment for you Friday, but I'll explain it to you as soon as we finish taking pictures. So come back this way to the podium. Yes. So this Friday is Hideous Sweater, Holiday Sweater Day. And Wisdom, we're going to have you on the team to judge, to figure out who has the most hideous sweater. There is a prize. And you and some of your ambassadors will judge the sweaters to determine who wins the grand prize. All right? Now, before you step down, tell us a little bit about why you do as much as you do.
I believe that Wenton Woods has a title that, or a reputation that, well, a stereotype, I'm sorry, a stereotype from the community that isn't what it should be. I believe that the amount of things that is done at Wenton Woods, the things that the students have done, students that have graduated, that haven't even gone to college but are still successful, students that have become their own entrepreneurs, working at managerial positions. I just believe that Wenton Woods is really changing that stereotype and what the community says about us. So I always try to get other students involved because I do believe in, you know, getting people to be more involved and more in the community. And I believe that we should be prideful in what we have created out of, you know, what we used to have. I believe that Wenton Woods is very focused on their students, even building bonds with teachers, getting connections with other teachers. I just believe in being active. And I know that Wenton Woods is just so, it's just amazing. So I believe in warrior pride.
I have to give a little kudos to whoever named you Wisdom, and that was absolutely, that was on target. Way to go. Yes. All right, fantastic. Thank you for everything you do. Don't forget Rodney coming to pick you up so that you can tell him that he has that hideous sweater. Okay? And I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Goins, who wrote, that was awesome, what she wrote about her. And I know it's all true. Okay. The next one is from Coach Josh Amstad. And this person is Gregory Burns. Is Gregory here tonight? Okay. We'll save you. We always get our man. We'll get you next time. And who do we have last, Dr. Johnson? We have yours truly, Mr. Allender. So I received the message before you came up, Mr. Allender. And it was from Mr. Dixon, says, "Don't let him go up there without me getting here." So I'm glad you made it, sir. Yeah. "Mr. Allender is a veteran Wenton Woods Middle School teacher who demonstrates excellence in the classroom daily. He challenges and engages his students with intriguing and personally relevant projects that are infused with NTN, which is New Tech Network Practice Cards. He has been motivating students at Wenton Woods for over 20 years." Bravo for that. "His role as teacher leader extends well beyond his department facilitator position as he has become instrumental in several domains, including map and OST testing logistics. Oh, he also coaches cross-country. His dedication to the Wenton Woods Middle School community is top-tier, and we are proud to nominate him as Skyline Teacher of the Month." But before I tell you why, here's some of the things that Mr. Allender has embraced. Excellence in the classroom by using instructional practices that support higher academic achievement; motivation by encouraging and motivating students to surpass their expectations, both academically and socially; leadership by having a positive attitude with students, parents, colleagues, and the community; creativity and imagination by demonstrating creativity and teaching in a way that inspires young people to learn; dedication by showing excellent attendance, punctuality, and overall dependability." I'll read that one again. Dedication by showing excellence in attendance, punctuality, and overall dependability; and finally, communication by communicating effectively to the classrooms, parents, colleagues, and beyond. Mr. Allender, absolutely awesome, sir. Thank you for everything that you do. And we'll bring Mr. Dixon up to get this photo with you. Wisdom, when you were at the middle school, did you know Mr. Allender?
I didn't have him, but I knew what he was.
Okay, all right. That's a good move right there. Okay, so, Dr. Johnson?
All right, thank you Superintendent Smith. Congratulations, and thank you to all of our students, to Mr. Allender, and to our wonderful community partners in their absence today that sacrificed the time that they do to serve our district. The entire board wants to say thank you. We're very proud of all of your accomplishments. The next item on the agenda is 4.01, which is a recess for five minutes. So we'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we're back in session. They're teasing me for being so literal. And I am. I mean, I get on my own nerves with that sometimes, but that's who I am, okay?
Well, you know what, Dr. Johnson? You never get...
I'm sure. Sure that's not true. I'm sure that's not true, guys.
Great job there. I would say the exact same thing.
Point of order. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, and it's for public comments. And before I call up our first person for public comments, I want to turn the floor over to Mr. Smith. There was a public comment that was, a question was asked last meeting, I think the meeting before, and we want to give him space to address that, and then we'll call up the people for their public comment. So, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. So you have been, I just have to remember your name. Ms. Booker. Ms. Booker, you've been very diligent in several meetings where you've asked about the teachers being armed or administrators being armed. And one of the things that I can say is some districts are really contemplating it. It takes a lot of work and a lot of ingenuity to create that. So right now, we're having conversations with law enforcement about what that really looks like and all the good, bad, and indifferences that may go along with it. So I didn't want you to think that we were ignoring your questions. It's just that we are not there at this point. We're still working through it. What we really would like to do is, instead of really talking about arming teachers and staff, what we would really like to do is to have more SROs in our building. That would be most beneficial. So I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Thank you.
For now.
Okay, that's all right. That's all right, that's good. Yes, ma'am.
The next street over.
I got it. Yes, ma'am.
When they had the pulse.
Okay.
So it was kind of unnerving, even just for the kids at the school and everybody at the school, even being in that whole community.
Totally understand.
Yes, yes.
But I will say, the community, law enforcement, staff, they did an incredible job working through it together to understand, is this real or not? And our young people, you would be amazed of how they handled the pressure of dealing with it. So your questions are well warranted, and we will get back with you when you have more. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, so the next person for our public comments is Helen Booker. So you can take the podium, please. Now...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am representing tonight my fourth grader grandson. And he keeps asking me every meeting, did I ask you all? And I keep forgetting. He wants to know, does the school have pet therapy? We were watching TV, and you know how they have the, the sick children in bed, and instead of giving them the medicine, they have the dogs come in? Well, he's a dog lover. And he just wants to know if the school has pet therapy? If you do, fine. If you don't, why not? And can you consider that?
You know what? I can answer that question. The district does have pet therapy.
Good.
And we have a guinea pig that actually rolls around in a stroller, and the kids pet it and take care of it, and it's really absolutely amazing. So, yeah, we do.
So where do you do it at?
It's at the middle school for now.
Oh.
So we're going to transition and do some other things, but we have stepped up and kids wanted to do it. I've actually seen this guinea pig in stroller myself, and I'm, I was a, who knew about this? Who did not know? Okay. It is true. Yes, we have a guinea pig, and the kids absolutely love it. I don't know it's, I don't know her name or his name.
Okay.
But it's Guinea. Okay. Well, here's, but here's the other advantage. We won't forget that. So with all this energy in the room, with all this energy in the room, let me tell you a little bit about Guinea.
Okay.
Guinea is not allowed to be home alone over the weekend, which is in the school. So Guinea is always looking for a person that he can go home with over the weekend. He comes with a stroller, he comes with his bag and some of the other treats and other things. And so I've actually seen him with the stroller and everything. So no, he can't push a stroller by himself. But Guinea is an amazing, and the kids absolutely love this. They embrace it because, remember, guinea pig's fur is really soft and very delicate and different. So there we go. So tell your grandson, we have pet therapy, and we're going to try to move it all the way through the ranks so that every school has that opportunity. All right?
When you ask about a dog.
Okay. Right now, we have Guinea, and.
We'll start with Guinea.
We're working, we're working on it. We're working on it. We're working on it. Oh, yes. I like Mr. Birdy's, we're going to start out small, and then we'll get ourselves to that one. Yeah. So I hope that answers your question. All right. Very good.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Booker. The next person that I have for public comments is Shannon Jenkins. Shannon, you can take the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm representing myself. I'm a resident. I have two sons, and the topic that I want to address and bring to discussion is youth athletics, more specifically, the Little League Football Team, the Little Warriors. I believe there's some confusion in terms just how the Little Warriors fits in with the school district or even the municipality, so I'm starting here. As a parent, I have some, some concerns about the league we're in, whether we are a part of the school district or not. It's called the OP League, and it doesn't have any governance over it, so it's kind of like the Wild Wild West. I believe there is a board, but there isn't really much checks and balances. For one, there has been some violent things that have taken place. I'm sure you guys have watched the news and saw that there was a shooting at one of the football games, the Super Bowl. So that concerns me because that's the league we're in, and you have little four, five, six-year-olds around, all that. And then secondly, there aren't any background checks. So, you know, I understand that there could be some, you know, minor offenses, you know, misdemeanors and all that, but when it becomes like sexual predators and violent offenders, that's where I have a true issue. So I just wanted to bring that up. As I said, I'm not sure of the affiliation that the Little Warriors Football Team has with the school district, but we are called the Little Warriors, and I'm assuming there is some type of affiliation, and I could be corrected. But my request is that there is some type of support or guidance or anything like that because there are other leagues out there, like Princeton, Fairfield, and all those schools are in a league of itself. However, we're in a league where it's like, hey, you want a team? Sure. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Johnson, I can, I can address that at this point. So when you mentioned, when you mentioned Fairfield, Princeton, Lakota, most of those are not really affiliated with the school, but they use the school brand as the colors. So we're, they're, they're Little Warriors, but they're not really affiliated with the school. We don't have any governance over anything other than that they play games on some of our property, and that's how it works. So as far as background checks and those things, it's up to that organization. It's a separate organization from the school. Okay? But anything that we can do, if we can ever help facilitate, we will, we will do it.
There's a lot of areas of opportunity.
Then that's what we want to be part of. Very good. And thank you for coming, but it is really not our organization. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. I could understand your concern with no background checks. That would make me stand up and take attention when you're talking about children, so. But I appreciate both of the people who came out tonight to do public, public comments. We appreciate your voice, and we do listen and try to take notice of what you bring us. And Guinea, I did not know we had Guinea, but it's nice to know what your grandson wants to know about the pets, the dog. That's right. But maybe he'll take Guinea home and decide, you'll have to get a Guinea, he's a no-guinea pig, so okay. I tried. Tried. I did, I tried. Okay. But thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is comments from the Witten Woods Teachers' Association. Do we have a representative here tonight that would like to come forward? She's, Mrs. James says, "I'm here, but I don't have anything to say." We appreciate you coming and spending time with us tonight at our meeting, Mrs. James. The next item on the agenda is 6.02, which is the Ohio Association for Public School Employees, and I see she is approaching the podium now.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Superintendent Smith, and Community Members, OC Sisters and Brothers. We just want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mrs. Ferguson. I, we appreciate you. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes, our motion will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the Treasurer's Report for Financial Statements for October 2022. November? That's what, I thought I was November, and then I looked at it.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you. I thought it was, should be October, I mean, November, but I see in October. Okay. Thank you.
All right. With the year-to-date revenues in the general fund, we're at 23.1 through the month of November. For the month of November, we received approximately 1.9 million, which was mostly from the State of Ohio Foundation. Most of all of our real estate taxes have been collected for the first half at this point. Our general fund expenditures for the year-to-date are at 21.3 million, and the district's general fund is currently running approximately 3.6% under budget, or approximately $2 million under budget. At this very same time, last year, we were running approximately 2.3 million under our budget. The last page shows you the financial activity for all the funds and shares with you the approximate cash balance in each individual fund, with a total of all fund current balances at 31 million. And that's basically a summary of the report that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, let the financial statements for the month of November 2022 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation for Investments for November 2022.
Yes. We had approximately $30 million invested in our various accounts, of which for the month of November, we earned approximately $75,000. Of that, the general fund earned $60,000, and the building funds continued to earn $15,000. Most of the building funds are currently at our Star Ohio State of Ohio Investment Pool, and it's currently paying approximately 3.2%. And a year ago, it was .02%. So as you know, the economy helps us in one side and hurts us on the other.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Resolution to Determine and Proceed with Submission of an Additional Tax Levy. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes. As you recall, at the last board meeting, you passed the Resolution of Necessity, meaning you, you decided to place before the voters a $3.5 million five-year emergency levy. When you pass the need of necessity, it's filed with the Hamilton County Auditor. The Hamilton County Auditor then decides what that millage is needed to be assessed in order to collect that. The county auditor decided that it would be 3, let's see, 6.21 mils. And the auditor certification is there before you, which is up to about $217 versus the $186 at the, of the 3 million. $217 on a $100,000 home. And I wanted to point out one thing is that the ballot language has now changed due to Ohio law. The actual ballot, as you read in the resolution, will actually read, so there's less confusion for the voter. It will read 5.6.21 mils for each $100,000 home, and it tells the voter that it will be $217,000 now versus saying mils per 100, and people get confused with that.
Very good.
Say again, it will be, it will be per year? It will actually state the amount per year for $100,000?
Yes. It actually, I'll read it for you if you'd like. I think I have it on the. A levy shall be imposed by the Witten Woods City School District for the purpose of providing for emergency requirements of the school district in the sum of 3.5 million per year, and a levy of taxes to be made outside of the 10-mil limitation estimated by the Hamilton County Auditor to be 6.2110ths, or 6.21 mils, for each dollar of valuation, which amounts to $217 for each $100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value. That's the county auditor's appraised value. It may not coincide with what you might sell it on the market for. It is the, it can go to the website and see what their appraised value at Hamilton County is.
I just wanted to clarify that because I think that's really important. The ballot language can be very, very confusing, and folks look at it different ways, but I think it's really important to be as transparent as possible in the district, and I'm glad that the, the language is much more easily understood. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed with submission of an additional tax levy as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Well, I just want to appreciate, we went through some exercise a little bit on, on why this levy was needed from the, by the district, why the school board is asking our community for that, and that information was very helpful in the last school board meeting. I want, I encourage our community to ask questions so that we can address those, those needs, so that they understand fully what, what the district funding is asked for.
Thank you. Were there any other comments? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, Personnel Schedules E. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes. As requested by the Board of Education, I would like to re-recommend that the board approve Personnel Schedules, Schedule E.
Board, a motion would be in order.
I make the motion to have the board, I'm sorry. I make a motion to have Schedule E approved as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, is the Reports of the Superintendent for School Reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. There's been some really great conversations around certain activities that our young people get into, not just the traditional things that we have in school. And so each month, we're going to invite some very distinguished guests to come and tell a little bit about what they do and why they do it. And our first guest would be these two nice ladies. They're really not guests. They work here.
Thank you all for letting us come this evening. Superintendent Smith, Dr. Johnson, Board, we appreciate you all letting us come tonight and speak about our little gym. I am Monique White. I am the Student Activities Liaison for the District. I work in the Treasurer's Department, and this is. So we're going to speak to you all tonight about our group, Warrior Sisters United. We also have two other ladies that work with us that we want to acknowledge, Ms. Tamara Smoot and Ms. Catalina Rosas. They work with us tirelessly as well. They give their time freely, so we appreciate them as well. We wanted to acknowledge them this evening. So Warrior Sisters United was founded in 2014. Actually, Mrs. Mahan was the individual who founded the organization. I came along later, and I'm gracious and happy to be a part of the group. Warrior Sisters United is actually just a sisterhood created by adult professional women to promote, foster, and develop young girls into young ladies. The Young Ladies of Warrior Sisters United are the members of the student bodies at the high school. We service young ladies in grades nine through 12. Our mission is to enlighten, empower, and encourage the young ladies to be their best, the best versions of theirselves every day. So our group is broken up into two individual groups. We have Warrior Sisters United, which is our ninth-grade group. We average about 15 to 20 students. And then we have Warrior Sisters University, which is our 10th to 12th grade students. We also average about 15 to 20 girls in each group. The groups of girls are chosen by admin referral, teacher recommendation, and parent inquiry. Basically, the reason why we have the groups broken up individually in different ways is because for the freshmen, we kind of want to get them acclimated with the school. As you know, it's hard being a freshman. You don't know anyone. Sometimes you don't, you may be new to the district altogether, so it's hard to make friends. So we try to work with the young ladies to help them make friends and encourage them to learn about the school. Our 10th through 12th grade girls, some of them we carry on through from ninth grade, and we try to work with them and help them become mentors to the younger girls, and we teach them about goal setting and relationships and such. So why are the girls referred to WSU? Some of them have social challenges. They have trouble making friends. Some of them do have behavioral challenges. Some of them can be new to the district, and some of them just have great leadership Some of them can be new to the district and some of them just have great leadership qualities that we want to pass on to the, and help them to foster that and teach other young ladies in the group. So, what do we do with the young ladies? So, each month, we meet with them. We meet with them once a month and we discuss different topics such as school safety, social media, and how these things impact our school. So, like we talked earlier about the unfortunate threat that we had in the school district. So, we'll talk with the students about that, see how they felt about that, get their opinions. We also talk about goal setting. At one point in time, we did a vision board with them where they actually cut out magazine articles and they like doing that. Excuse me. Ms. Mahan, she has a thing that she does with them called the WSU Game of Life, where they do budget planning. They talk about their careers and what they want to do. They talk about decision-making. We have talk sessions where guests come in and they talk to the girls. Like Mr. Martin will come in and talk about like what it means to be young ladies and what guys are expecting from young ladies. We also have Mr. Bratnick, he'll come in from time to time to talk to the young ladies as well. We do a segment on postponing sexual involvement. We do get the parents' permission before we spoke, we speak to the young ladies about sex. We do a lot of celebrating. We do holiday celebrations, games, we give them prizes. And then we also do an end of the year celebration for our graduating seniors. So, we have a lot of fun with the young ladies. So, here are just some pictures of some of the things that we do. We had a really hard time during COVID. We didn't get to spend time with the young ladies, so we went to their houses and we gave them stockings. We feed them really well. Ms. Mahan is our party planner, so as you can see, we, we feed them really well. These were a set of our twins who graduated, I think was that last year or two years ago? So, the girls really love being in our group. They give a lot to us as well. I'm pretty sure you guys know somebody that impacted your life. So, we just want to give back to them the way that, in a positive way. And so, this is what we do. I'm blessing, I want to be a blessing to others and they're a blessing to me. I think Ms. Mahan can contest that as well. So, this is our little group. We appreciate you guys giving us your time. Sorry, you guys, I was a little nervous, but thank you.
I, I think that was one of the ones that Ms. Kuhn wanted to know about, the sisterhood.
Oh, let me make sure as well. So, what is it, omega sigma?
Oh, that's pretty, that's pretty clever. Very clever. And, and Ms. White and Ms. Mahan, thank you very much. I thought you only counted money and I thought you only chased kids down and didn't come to school, so. Thank you for broadening our horizons. That, that's absolutely powerful.
Yes.
Amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you for coming and sharing with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Smith, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just still just excited about that one, Doc.
I know, that was very interesting. Warrior Sisters Unite.
Okay, so, one of the things that the Board, and we've been talking about it in meetings, is how to improve our communication, how to make us better communicators. And I think the one call that we use has actually done the things that we needed to do, but now it's time to step up our game. We want to become a little better, more involved, more developed about how we communicate people so that everybody is part of the communication. Ms. Hobbs is going to do a demonstration, a quick burst about this new opportunity called Parent Square. And I can tell you, when we viewed it with the executive team, we viewed it with our business partner, we viewed it with the administrators, and now it's time for us to vet it with the Board. We wanted, the, the reason people really fell in love with it is because when we send out a communication, it will translate in every language for us automatically. And when they send information back, I know I'm still in part of the show, Ms. Hobbs, I can't help it, but when they send information back in their language, it actually translates it back in English for us. So, it is a very incredible resource that I think the Board would be very pleased about our transition to stepping up our game.
So, with Parent Square, we've really focused on the Board's smart goal with community engagement. And the Board's goal is at Winton Woods, the district will partner and engage parents and community stakeholders to encourage shared ownership of our success. So, that was our primary founding point to, you know, be looking at other applications. In today's world, to get the word out, we're using the One Call Now system, which is basically just text, email, and voice. We're using Twitter, we're using Nextdoor, Facebook, and then the Warrior Supercast. Those are our main platforms. All of these platforms will stay the same with the exception of the One Call Now would be swapped out for the Parent Square. Some of the features of Parent Square, it does urgent and smart alerts. So, it also sends messages via SMS, which is the text, email, web application, text, voice. But it allows media-rich messages to come in. So, we're going to begin to see pretty messaging come through that's attractive, that maybe, you know, my, people might want to read a little bit more. Here's a few messages, like this can come across on the phones and the mobile phones as a notification, like something happened at the school or, you know, schools are closed today, stay safe, just an urgent alert. Another feature is, as Mr. Smith mentioned, it's built-in translation for over a hundred different languages. This was one of the primary things that really attracted us to this program. So, the district can continue to communicate in English. And then the parent receives it in their preferred language. So, the parent gets to choose what language they would like to receive the messaging in. You can see this is a two-way communication. The parent can text back to the district in their language and the district will receive it in English. So, it's different ways that we can engage the community and just communicate back and forth with all of the thirty-one, thirty-six, thirty-six spoken languages. It really supports all parents with the ability for us to communicate. Other features that it has, it goes to the classroom level as well. So, not only district messaging, but classroom ready. And it has one-on-one as well as group messaging. It can do volunteers, it can do sign-ups, so we can do parent-teacher conferences. So, this really is becoming the one spot for communications in the district. One of our first tasks that we need to do is we need to find out how the different groups are communicating. It gives an example, I believe band might use Remind 101. Other teachers, other athletic groups might use other messaging. And we want to move them all into our Parent Square. So, our parents know that they will get the communications through Parent Square at all levels, from the classroom level to the district level. Other features that it has, school services. So, it can support forms and permission slips. So, as an example, electronic delivery of report cards. So, it can do secured messaging as well, which is really adds efficiencies to the front office, not having to stuff and mail out all the report cards with cost savings there. Setting appointments, it does the same thing with attendance. It all goes through the email system. Here's oversight and analytics. So, it also provides reporting for the district so we can kind of see our, our messages being viewed. Our, is our audience receiving our messaging? And it should give us, you know, some data behind the scenes to know who's actually receiving them, who's not, and what method is, you know, the different languages, as well as what method are we really reaching our community with? Here's our timelines and milestones. So, the winter and the spring, so we have a contract in place where we're beginning to just build. We're building, so basically, One Call Now is going to stay in place all the way through the end of the school year with no change there. But it's allowing us to begin all of our data integrations and allow all of our data to start flowing through. We need to document all those student groups and build on that. We'll have some small pilots in the spring. We'll have administrative training to get our administrators familiar with the product. As we head into the summer, July first is the magic cutoff date where our parents need to do absolutely nothing to start with. By doing nothing, they'll continue to receive the basics, the SMS, the text, and the voice, exactly what we have now. We'll have teacher training in August as we head back to school during that particular week. And then we're going to begin the push to roll out the applications to the parents and all the additional features like the report cards and things like that. So, that's kind of what our timelines and milestones look like for this project. So, really, we take all of our, our groups, our students, our Board, and parents, teachers, community support staff, all working together to promote our students' success. Any questions?
So, is it, so is it like an app?
It is an application on the phone. It is, you can go to a website or you could do nothing and, and receive the basics, SMS, text, email, and voice.
So, is the app how they do the interaction?
Yes. So, we're going to need our parents to get this app when the day comes.
One of the main things that we'll have to do when the project gets rolled out with the parent communication, that's when it's going to be critical where they tell us what language they want us to communicate to them in.
We do have languages marked in our information system, what their native language is, and we can push it to their native language. That might not be their preferred language, but it, we, at least we have a basis to start with.
Absolutely.
So, when you say that it's going to work with report cards and push up for like the academic stuff, so is it going to be like a plugin like to Echo and some of the other software that we currently have that where teachers are already using?
No, it'll be a PDF delivery system of the report cards that the teachers put together in the normal ways. Correct.
I see, okay. So, I was wondering if it was like connected, like the grades would automatically flow through there, but no, okay.
A PDF would be delivered via email. Here's your report card, here's your interim. And that's, not in the beginning, we need to work towards that.
Sure, sure.
And we'll be building out and taking advantage of all those features as we continue to grow in it.
So, all, all of those like plugins into the system, like the PDF is a plugin into the system? So, there will be other plugins that you're saying as it rolls out, more things will be capable of doing?
Correct, correct.
So, if there was like a newsletter that a school would send out, if the parents want it, it would be in an attractive format and they could easily see it on their phone or on their computer? The other thing is if a household has more than one person that's getting the data, is it different sign-ins for each person of the chi, of the family, or is it?
That's a good question. I'll have to find the answer for you.
Or how they would be combined together, just in case?
On the top of my head, I would say they would probably get multiple messages.
So, it's who's ever, whatever phone number that, that has the app on it, then they would get the messages? They could access the messages, is that what you're saying?
So, we will, we will set up, we will set up the basics. In other words, we have the phone numbers on file, we have the email addresses on file. We will send to that information just like we do today. When they create the application, they'll probably be able to set it up with Google, with Facebook, with, you know, whatever single sign-on source that they would like to select. And then they will log in and associate a student. There will probably be student keys that will be passed out. They'll connect their kids and they will receive the data in the application or on the website when they log in.
So, is the intention that groups and different organizations will be communicating through this as well?
Correct. So, there's one spot, one-stop shopping for the parent to get all communications.
And I think the, when Ms. Kuhn asked the question about in one household, multiple, multiple opportunities, right now, the track team might be sending something, and the bands send something in their own communication device. This is actually going to bundle it together where all the communication comes from one location so that parents are a little more informed about where things are as well as the staff and students.
And they'll just get used to one place to pick up or, you know, be able to be connected to all of the district communications.
We're trying to create another level of convenience for our families.
That's interesting. And then the two-way conversation, that's a subset, a different piece of the program. So, if a teacher wanted to have a, they could have that conversation that way or if the superintendent wanted to talk to somebody, I guess they could. Or a group, could there be group texts or is it that refined or it's just more of a?
I'm not sure about the group texts either. I am sure of the one-to-one for sure. And if teachers do one-to-one with, you know, the, the parents or whatever, that if you remember the analytical, the report piece, there's administration that would have oversight into that to ensure proper communication as well.
We were, we were able to see it in real time where the demonstrator was, sent a message out to a parent, came back instantly in another language and back and forth, and they're communicating so freely that it just made it very wholesome.
So, if somebody sends just a message, has a question, where is that going to be filtered to? And how is that going to be answered? Like, is there going to be another position created to manage this or what is that looking like?
We'll have to link it to somebody. And right now, the, the two heads are myself and Drew Jackson, head of our Community Engagement Coordinator. Right now, I would assume all the overflows that aren't directly, you know, connected back to a teacher or to a group would probably come that way.
Yeah, the, the other part of that is every message that comes is directed to someone. They just may not be getting it. So, what Ms. Hobbs and Ms. Jackson will be able to do is send it to the correct department so they can get the information out is what's for lunch or how the bus is running or did my kid get his report card, et cetera, et cetera.
I guess that was my main thing when I thought about it. You know, if I'm sending a message and trying to get urgent information, yeah, I'm not going to get urgent information if nobody's checking it. And so, that's why, you know, if we're trying to be efficient and effective and make sure our communication is on point, we can't be having people say, hey, let's use this app, let's use the program. I send a message and nobody responds.
Very good.
So, you know, just looking at those type of things and making sure, no offense that we have the personnel in place, but I haven't hired nobody else. I'm just saying.
And one other thing, the community can log into this as well, maybe to get public information on events or schools?
I was going to say, right now, it is, it's meant for the parents connected to a student. But just like we do in One Call Now, we came up with a way that we can add external members. So, I haven't researched that yet, but the ability to add external members, we'll look into.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure what community meant on there, so that's what.
Yeah, keep in mind, we're transitioning into it, so we still have One Call. So, we didn't get to away with one. We're slowly transitioning into it, making sure that everybody gets the professional development that they need for it.
Sure, sure. I know it's in its beginning, so I didn't mean to pepper you with a lot of questions of how it's going to work.
We're excited, though.
Yeah, no, it's very exciting.
From a cost standpoint, how does it compare?
It's approximately double of what the other application that we're currently using with One Call Now. But we're looking at efficiencies and we're looking at, you know, the ability to save money both in time and resources with stamps that we mail out several times a year for all the report cards. So, we're hoping to recoup money.
So, it's like Joe Burrow playing against Robert Thomas. You guys know who Robert Thomas is? You see, that's the difference, he's nobody, so this is totally different. There we go. So, there we go. Catch that one, Brandon?
That's the guy on your fantasy football team, huh? I guess it's to Ms. Kuhn's point. I guess it would be nice if we could correlate this somewhat to the website because, you know, for our community members, that's where their information needs to be. Like, I, I, I like the, the fact that Parent Square is for parents, not for the community. Our website is full of information if people go out there and look for it. So, you know, this is for our active parents who have students, not for community members who just want to know information. That's what our website is for.
Ms. Jackson and I are also currently working on a refresh to our website, which will include an app for our web too.
Awesome, awesome.
And maybe the community could really, you know, dive into that when that web app is ready.
Awesome, thank you so much. Appreciate your department for that.
That's important, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hobbs. We appreciate that information and it will certainly help with our communication with having thirty-six, I believe, different languages currently at the school. And maybe bring those parents out, you know, into, back into the school if they feel like, oh, I have a way to communicate. It's very uncomfortable to try to communicate if you have that language barrier.
Understand all the rich opportunities available for them too.
Right, right. So, you could be in a room full of people and still feel like you're isolated because you don't have, you know, the full communication skills. So, I think that is just fantastic.
To make sure that the parents know how to come out and support their children in certain activities.
Absolutely, in different activities. Well, they wouldn't always get that. Or gone are the days where you could stick something in a backpack and expect it to get home, you know? And get the information to the parents. It's like, it was hardly working when my kids were in school, so I just can't imagine. Everything's tech, so I appreciate that, we really do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good job, Ms. Hobbs, thank you.
Mr. Smith, you have anything else for school reports?
No, but we're going to move on.
Yeah, the next item is facility update. We have that one too. Yeah, Mr. Denny.
While Mr. Denny is coming up, I will give you Dr. Johnson. Johnson is going to be coming soon from the Site-Based Health Clinic. I'm happy to announce that the district received the award for putting a clinic in and it's going to actually be in this building. Right now, we're working with the architects of what the design looks like and it is at no cost to our taxpayers, zero cost.
Say that again.
Yeah, I have to put that in there. But we are very excited. There were other sites that they could have given the award to, but they, we've been working on this for a while and I'm just happy that it is coming to terms. I know that Ms. Bryant's been asking me questions about when is it coming, how are we doing it? Being that nurse and having that nurse intuition. But some of the, the starting pieces, we're going to actually have her, since she is a nurse, to come in and help facilitate some of those conversations just to make sure things flow the way we want them to.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Denny?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Smith. Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Smith. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, board. Um pleased to follow on the heels of that. That is really exciting, and it's been a long time and a lot of effort in the making. So my my report is uh just an update on demolition very quickly. Primary South um is complete. Retainage is being released. Religious waiting on the final certificate of completion to actually call that a completed project. Um elementary school demolition is still in need of four punchless items being completed, so we're uh with the contractor, attempt to get those rectified, and then we'll have that nearing uh final completion as well. Onto the intermediate school or the future early childhood center renovation project. Did have quite a bit of worker, uh quite a few workers on site the last week or two, and that'll continue into the next few weeks. Um they have mobilized, the HVAC firms mobilized to to begin the hydronic piping. That's the piping for the boilers. It's the heating system essentially. Um so that's a brand-new system coming in. Uh will last the next fifty years easily. And that's completed in the west wing, the, I guess that's the east, east wing, the the affectionately referred to as the new wing, the section of classrooms down the ramp. Um they're starting there and then proceeding into the southeast corner of the building. Sheet metal deliveries arrived uh last week, so duct work will also begin soon, and that will also begin uh in the same direction. And so you will start to see some duct work being completed. And finally, the boiler room layout was complete, so I'm not sure if the board's aware, but we did have a boiler that we had to buy very late in the game for Primary South, about two years prior to it being demolished. And I believe um when we bought it at the time, we thought, you know, this building's going to be gone. At least that's the master planning. So how do we make a wise investment? So we bought a bo- a boiler that could be moved. So that boiler is now in the intermediate school or the future early childhood center. So we're going to get a lot of life out of that, and it was part of the plan, so. Anyway, that concludes, yeah, knock on something. But we do have newer boilers, uh so now we've got a twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen boiler in that building and then a twenty oh eight, or two thousand eight boiler, so we're, they're newer.
Which is new by boiler terms.
Oh, by, yeah. Well, the the one that replaced was an original boiler, so that was from nineteen sixty-eight, so. At any rate, that concludes the report, though.
Very good job, sir.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it.
Mr. Denny, one question I had.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember how when we were doing the new building construction, we could go on the website and click and get that information? There's nowhere we can get this information.
Not, not at this time, no.
Okay, okay, I was just wondering.
Across that frontier. That's a good point.
But we are still going to make sure the board has that tour, because they're looking forward to it.
Yep.
Oh, definitely.
So you can see what it, the existing situation looks like.
Yeah, it's, it is different to see it in person, so you're just taking it a lot more.
So I do want to bring up one final piece, and Mr. Denny, if you want to elaborate on it, feel free to. We, I don't know if you, if the board ever notices that there is a cell tower on the property of where the garage is, the bus garage. And uh that that cell tower's been there for a while and um there were some negotiations back and forth, and we settled on a deal that was good at the time. And so there's another company that's interested in putting a cell tower up. Uh we haven't finished the the rest of the conversation, but this one would be for a heftier monetary opportunity for uh the district. And uh we're going to bring it to the board next month with all the language, so you guys can vote on it to see if this is something that we may in be interested in. Uh people often talk that schools can't make money. They just need to figure out a way to do it legally and make sure that they're at the right place at the right time. So this cell phone uh tower is going to be another investment for the district, and um we've been kind of hammering it out with the people, and it's, it's pretty interesting. They seem very knowledgeable and trustworthy and confident that this will bring revenue to the district, and we're excited, and it's not harmful to our children.
Yeah, is it at the south or where um Primary South used to be?
Location's not determined yet. We have several sites where it could be.
Yeah, it's still in process.
Because that's where the existing one they put up, that's there, okay.
Correct. Yeah, and there are, I think, four or five carriers. We lost track after we capitalized the lease. They don't tell us anymore because we, they don't have a fiduciary responsibility to do so. But there were five carriers on that at the time.
This one's different. Every time a carrier's added, they have to tell us, and there's more incentive to do that, monetary incentives. So this one's being looked at very carefully.
They use heat mapping for various carriers to determine where the hot spots and low, you know, the cold spots are. Where is it? Where where are you going to get one bar versus four or five?
Yes.
And that's how those locations are eventually determined. Still in process. I think we've been going back and forth with them for about a month.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a tag team, Mr. Smith and I and Ms. Wilson.
We tag pretty well.
Legally.
Yeah.
Making sure it's, you know, it's going to meet the needs of the district. One of my favorite critiques is when folks admonish the district to operate more like a business, and we're heavily regulated. But this is an avenue that is a potential profit or, you know, uh potential profit center. And this firm actually s- uh specializes in not, uh in public entities, not just private sector uh construction, so.
Yeah, Ms. Wilson, thank you for your legal eyes. You caught some things that we didn't necessarily see, so it was very beneficial, along with the Site-Based Health Clinic. So thank you.
Lots going on. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Smith, the next item on the agenda is um eleven point oh one, which is your recommendation for the personnel schedules.
So you see how we do that? When we acknowledge you, that means you're up next.
Well, good evening. Uh before you, you have Schedule A resignations, Schedule C uh support staff, and Schedule G uh supplementals. For your approval, there is no Schedule B this month, and um you've already approved our Schedule E for leaves. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, let's put a motion on the floor, please.
Well, they can make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, any questions for discussion?
Sure. Are we having any other difficulties uh filling or having positions unfilled at this time? Are all our teacher positions filled? Are, okay.
Yeah, we still need um an art teacher. Uh we always are looking for special ed teachers, and we have several aid positions that need to be filled. And hopefully, we'll be able to find a Spanish teacher soon, and then we have um a teacher that's transitioning out um for first grade, and I'll go see something next month, hopefully.
Spanish at the middle school or at the high school level, and do we have um language, enough Spanish teachers right now, or we're short?
Well, so we have um some large numbers at the middle school uh for student numbers, and so Mr. Dixon has been asking for another specials teacher, and he specifically requested Spanish because he'd like to be able to offer another section of Spanish to help with his master schedule. And so with that specials teacher, he could um reduce his class size and bring us into the contractual limits. So we're, we're kind of looking at that, and if the right person emerges and all the stars align, we may have something for you, you know, at some point.
Yeah, and I will say, the, when the, when the board approved the waiver for phys ed uh years ago where you don't have to have phys ed by taking two years of having two years of a particular sport, it was really helpful because that's what helped us with our um honors diploma kids. Because instead of taking phys ed, they can take a more advanced course, because they couldn't really fill it all into their schedule, so it did work out to our advantage.
But thank you for the question. Anything else?
Now, board, are there any other questions for discussion? Seeing now, Mr. Seamer, would you please call it up?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh two, which is the revised twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district calendar. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, we noticed something, and um having the the monthly meetings with the uh association was, has been very beneficial. What we noticed is the um New Year's Day falls on the first, which is a Sunday. And in order for the district to have the full two weeks, a hundred and eighty-five days of instruct, a hundred and eighty-five attendance days for teachers, we've made the recommendation that the second would actually be the official holiday, and then teachers would be back on the third remotely because they would be doing their grades. And then you would have the uh paraprofessionals that would actually be doing some of their online work that they need to do to keep their certifications up. So the official day, uh first day back for students would be January fourth. So teachers will come back third, uh I mean, to do the work that they need to do remotely, and the official day would be January fourth, which is a Wednesday. And contractually, the teachers are required to have a hundred and eighty-five instructional days. So in order to push that through, uh the last day for students is the twenty-sixth of May, and the last day for teachers is the day after Memorial Day, but that day would also be a records day. So all the terms and conditions meet contractually. We were concerned that um from a transportation perspective, from a teacher perspective, from a staff perspective, that if we made the first day back um January second, that would, there may be some attendance issues as well, the day after New Year's.
And that's this, this January?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And that's a change from the original?
Yes.
Okay.
Should we do a motion?
Yeah, let's put a motion on the floor, please.
They can make a motion to approve the revised two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three district calendar as presented?
I'll second that.
It's a motion to second. Are any questions at this point?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for catching that. I think all of us have been operating under the assumption that that Monday is always back to the school work, but with the holiday, so we want to make sure that we give people time to recuperate and enjoy as we step into the new year.
Love your word, recuperate.
From all the hard work, not from the party.
So just a question. So the change at the beginning of the year in January, and then you said at the end of the year, school is extended to the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth for students, and the thirtieth will be the last day for for teachers.
And was it the twenty-fifth prior to, it got pushed back by one day or two days?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay.
And remember, we put something in because the uh, and you can give us feedback on it. Teachers were saying um early on, when we've had committee meetings with the calendar, because our calendars are two years in advance, they were saying that October is a long stretch, superintendent. Is there anything that we can do? So inserting the fall break actually helped with our teacher and staff attendance, and they got a break in between, as well as students did as well. Yes.
All right, very good. Any other questions at this time? Seeing now, Mr. Seamer, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, which is the Board of Education Reports and the Legislative Report. Mrs. Coon did pass some things out, but you have the floor.
Um, the legislature in Ohio has been very busy post-election. Um there's some updates you'll see. A lot of the the information one week to the next is just a progression or a continuation of some of the work, and as it passes through different committees and different sides of the House, whether it's Senate or the House of Representatives in Ohio. Um, there were a couple of things I thought were important, but of course you can take a look through there at your leisure, but um the state Senate Bill one seventy-eight, and in it, it did pass the Senate, and it talked about re uh reforms and functions of the responsibilities of the State Board of Education. And I'm still kind of curious how this will play out, but they have four different pieces that they're talking about. They're creating a Department of Education and workforce with a cabinet-level director. A lot of it's hierarchy and logistics on how they run their department. Um, of course, this does affect us as school districts and how they implement it, so I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of those changes that they have going on. Um, there was uh legislation um talked about with swatting, which was relevant to, unfortunately, an event here. And swatting does not mean spanking or anything like that from old school like me. It wasn't swat, so. Um, but it's the the unfortunate incident of reaching out to uh emergency personnel and causing such a huge disruption and cost to um the communities, uh the mental cost of anguish. Even it's, if it's not real, there's still that heightened feeling and emotions that go on, and the police officers that respond. And it's not to be taken lightly, and I know our district uh takes this very, very seriously and wants to make sure our students and the community know that this is, this is a very serious issue and one that the um district has zero tolerance on. But there is legislation regarding that, that new occurrence that's happening more frequently, which is sad. Um hopefully, it can get curbed. Um, the other piece I thought was very interesting. Well, this is still ongoing, but it talked about um how um gender in school sports continues on. They're still taking hearings, and there's a lot of, it was on the news, too, actually, about it, too. It made the local news. There are um different community members and different educators talking about how this is going to affect students. I won't take any issues on either side, but it is going to be something that will affect school districts. And they're advocating that the federal government's saying that you have to have certain, uh and the superintendent can correct me, but on the, is it um Title Nine? That talks about um equalities, and they're wanting to extend it over to um tran- transgender uh issues and how they relate to sports. So, and I think there's monies from the federal government that are tied, and different states are challenging that role, that that money's tied to following those obligations.
Yeah, in the, in the beginning, you're right with the Title Nine. It was really designed for equity, uh because you had um situations where female athletes on basketball team were getting the old basketball uniforms from males, and they realized this is not really fair. This is not equitable. Uh so they decided to push the envelope a little difficult, a little more, and I know Ms. Wilson and Ms. Denny are our Title Nine folks that just kind of watch everything. So we have to go back from time to time to talk to our athletic department about the equity and the formula that we say, hey, do our teams look the same? Do they have the same opportunities? Now it's stretched over into the transgender uh opportunity. That was not where it was originally supposed to be, but it's now it's moving in that direction as well.
Sure. So it's a time of kind of, a lot of things are in flux with that and still not decided, but I think it's a really important issue for us to follow as a board and see what's going on. Um, again, you can kind of go through there and see that, and I did ask about teachers on, in particular, because um there is a teacher shortage, not just in Ohio, but throughout the country. And there's some House bills that are talking about um giving a loan repayment to students or to teachers for their student loans, which I think is a really important piece to to foster people to go into education. There's also some talk about uh growing your own teaching force, so to speak. Uh I think that's a really important component, and I think there's some uh richness that that Wynt Woods does have, because we do have several former students that came back as teachers. And I think that's, that's an important um buy-in.
Yeah, we saw Alex Crest tonight, so that was really good.
That's just one. Uh so I think there's a way that we can help ourselves with that by being able to foster um that program. And I know that the district did sponsor some um extra education opportunities for our teachers as well, because that's a really important com- component to keep our our staff here and happy and working for Wynt Woods. So um that's an important component. From a business, that's just business across the board, wherever you're at. If you want to talk business like Mr. Smith and Mr. Denny were talking about, you have to keep your um your employees happy and trained and so that they'll stay, because they have a lot of opportunities to go somewhere else, and we have to keep them here, our good ones especially. So those were a few things. I won't go on, but they were really busy. I don't know if they'll slow down, but we'll see. So. Any other thoughts?
Very good.
Thank you, Mrs. Coon. Usually, you're right. Toward the end of the year, they get a little slower, but that's really a lot of information, so we appreciate you bringing that to us. The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh two, the Great Oaks Technical Center Report. And I believe, Mr. Birdy, you could just say what you told me earlier.
Yeah, uh we haven't had a meeting since the last report that I gave, so I have nothing to report tonight. Our next meeting is Wednesday night, so.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy, for the time that you do spend over with the Great Oaks uh folks over there on their board. Yes, thank you. The uh next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, which is Board um motions and recommendations to set the date, time, and location of the organizational meeting for twenty twenty-three. Board, a motion is in order to approve the date, time, and location of the organizational me- meeting for twenty twenty-three for Monday, January the ninth. for Monday, January the 9th, 2023, at 6:30 at this location here, South Campus 174 Fair Green Hills. A motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to set our organizational meeting for 2023 to be held on January 9th at 6:30 PM at this campus, the Wynton Woods South Campus, the room number 1106.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I'll be out of the country.
Oh, you will be out of the country?
Yeah, I leave on the 22nd.
He will be president.
Thanks, Brandon.
You didn't know how that worked, did you?
That's what happens when you miss a meeting.
Hey, listen. Brandon Smith, why don't you do what you did to me?
And there is a potential that I may be out of state as well.
Well, if January the 9th is not a good time, we should maybe look to move it to another day.
Do I have to retract my motion?
No, we'll just amend.
You have to do it.
Within 70 days.
Within the first...
10 days?
Yeah, first 10 days.
First 10 days.
First 10 days of the year. So the 9th.
So if the 9th is out.
That's the soonest one.
That's that. You would have to go earlier. Are you out of town that first week?
He's out. He says he leaves on the 22nd.
The 22nd of December?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So he's going back the 10th?
But I'll be in, well...
No, I'm not back until the 11th. But the only days I could... Know I could come back will be either the 2nd, the 3rd, or the 4th. Those would be the only days I could come back. Outside of that, I have obligations. Each one of those days, I'm out of the country.
Second, 3rd, or 4th. What is your...
I'm in town, the 2nd.
That's gonna be rough.
Okay. And will the building be open because we just voted a...
We just closed the building for the 2nd.
Yeah, we did. We just closed the building for the 2nd and the 3rd. No, we're open the 3rd. So are you available on the 3rd?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryant? Are you available on the 3rd? He's like, please, please, please.
Oh, that's gonna be rough. Yeah, I'll be.
We'll make it quick.
Flight is a flight.
Oh, the flight is on the 3rd?
No, the flight will be the day before, so the 2nd is... We'll fly back in the 3rd, okay?
Okay, all right. Now, we need to make an amendment to the motion on the floor to change the date from Monday, January the 9th, 2023 to...
I think should I just withdraw the motion and then we start all over again? Or since we seconded it?
You can withdraw the motion.
Well, you can withdraw the motion and make it again.
Or Mrs. Coon can just amend the date.
I was going to say you can amend the date.
I just want to make sure I do it properly.
Yes. To the 3rd, which is Tuesday.
At 6:30, same time? Okay. I would like to make a motion to amend my former motion for our organizational meeting to be set on January the 3rd of 2023, 6:30 PM here at the Wynton Woods South Campus. I'm assuming the room will be the same, 1106.
I'll second.
Okay, the new motion has been... It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion on that one? Everybody's available for Tuesday, January the 3rd, 2023, at 6:30 PM? Okay. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Little struggle, but it passed.
Big struggle.
The next item on the agenda is 13.02, which is the appointment of President Pro Tem. Until the president is appointed at the organizational meeting, the 2023 organizational meeting, board, a motion is in order to appoint the president pro tem.
So just make a motion to appoint Dr. Johnson as president pro tem.
I second the motion. That's really wrong.
Until a president is appointed.
That's okay. I got that. I got that. Okay, Mr. Birdy? And Mrs. Bryant, you seconded that. Okay.
I 30'd just in case we did it.
President Pro Tem. Okay, yeah, absolutely. It's just the president pro tem. And I... It has been... I'm all speechless. I'm never speechless. The motion has been made and seconded.
You didn't tell me not to.
Yeah, I did. I thought you were going to nominate yourself, though.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Seeing there's no discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes.
You understand that's temporary. That's not all.
Yeah, that's not the real one. So that's, yeah. So that vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Birdy.
She said sarcastically.
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 14.01, which is comments from the Board of Education. And Mrs. Coon, we'll start with you.
I'd like to thank the services of our president. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I'll start off there, first of all. Thank you for your service here as the president this year. That was important to say. I do appreciate our students. I wish them a happy holiday season. I enjoyed the musical production that was shared by our choir director. It was great. It put us in a nice festive mood, which I appreciate. I'm glad our students have opportunities to go down and work with the Cincinnati Pops. That's a huge opportunity that our students are able to get out and have that type of experience that many, many people never have. So it's a great opportunity, and I think that's... Our student that got the award earlier from Kuanis Wisdom, she brought out about how, what our students are doing and all the opportunities that they have. And that's one of the things that I thought was important that at our board meetings, that we see some of the clubs and the programs that our students get to participate in because our community and even on the board, I don't... We don't get to see all these day in and day out. I think they're a really important component of the richness of what our students are able to enjoy and how we can help them make a better life for themselves and their families. But that's very, very important. But I wish everyone happy holidays. Do your homework, read during holiday break, get educational toys. All that good stuff, stuff they don't want to hear, but it's still important. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coon. Next, let's try Mr. Smith, Mr. Brendan Smith.
Ah, once again, thank you, everyone, for your time and coming to this meeting. I'd like to thank, once again, the choir, Ms. Chakowski and Mr. Kress for them and their involvement with the Pops Orchestra. I did watch a little bit of that on live stream, I think, Saturday night. So it was very exciting as a VE alum to see them still engaging with the Pops and different opportunities like that. I would have been there in person, but I was with our Wynton Woods High School Drum Line, who was involved with the City Gate Christmas program over the weekend. So they were in rehearsals Thursday, Friday, and performances Saturday and Sunday. So I appreciate Ms. Ashbrook and Mr. Rashawn Armston for their work with the Drum Line and getting them ready for that. I'd like to thank all of our honorees who got their acknowledgements today. It just shows that the, you know, the Warrior family here is very strong in what we do in training up our young people. I'd like to thank our technology department, Ms. Hobbs. Thank you. I appreciate that. Keeping us on the cutting edge of technology and engaging in our correspondence with our students and teachers. And lastly, I'd like to thank the WSU leadership. I thought that was awesome just to see different ways that we're engaging with our students. You know, it's more than just, you know, books and reading. It's really engaging, reaching out with our young people and getting them on all levels. So as we go into our winter break, I encourage all of our students to break, you know, breathe, have that time away so we can come back rejuvenated and ready to get our honors diplomas. I thought I was going to get more than a head nod, Mr. Smith. Preach about that all the time. You can give me a head nod. Thank you, everyone.
Way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, Mrs. Bryant?
I don't know how I can follow both of them. They're so enthusiastic. So I want to say ditto, ditto, and ditto. I do want to acknowledge Wynton Woods City School District for being a partner with We Thrive and Forest Park. This is our fifth year as a We Thrive school, so I think that deserves recognition. So yay. That's... I appreciate everything that everyone does, day in and day out, to make this a school district of excellence and to borrow from superintendent's word, a school district of fidelity. One of the things that I am most proud of is living in the community where you do get to showcase all of the wonderful things that the young people are doing inside the school and outside, and to the dedicated educators that are influencing the next generation. I'm super excited about the clinic coming. That's right up my alley, so looking forward to that as well. Thank you, each and every one of you. Have a happy holiday season, and again, go Warriors.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. Mr. Birdy?
Just a quick thank you to everybody for all that they do for the school district. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Hope everybody has a great time. Stay safe. Enjoy yourselves and your families. It was great seeing Wisdom Davis and hearing her story and the things that she's accomplished and knowing that she's going to accomplish great things in the future. She's a great example of a Wynton Woods student, and that's why we're here and we do what we do. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. Seymour?
I just wish everybody a healthy, happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Very simple. Basket contest is tomorrow. That's all I can say.
I thought it was Wednesday.
It's not. I'm just excited. I just want to see if you guys...
I just want to see if we're on our toes.
You're like, we're not ready. So that just gave... What I did, what I did, what I did was just a psychological mind play to see if they were ready. That means they're not ready. So that was good. Remember, the whole goal was to work outside of the basket. And originally, we had exchanged gifts, and then we wanted to step it up and do something. So no matter how exciting this feels for you, remember, the benefit is to a family. So that is really the great opportunity. Go Team 10.
Yeah. Okay. I'm on Team 6. Go Team 6.
And if people say, I don't know my team number, that tells me something. That was another play out there. I don't know my team number.
Team 10.
I'm on Team 6.
Watch this, Dr. Johnson. Brandon Smith, what's your team number?
I have no idea. I just send money.
I got someone else who sent money. No, I was kidding. But, yes, that is very exciting. It's always good to give back. And when you volunteer, just as a whole, I'm a believer in volunteering. And just as a whole, when you volunteer, there's just something about it. It releases some endorphins. It makes you feel... If you had problems walking in, when you hand a plate of food to someone who is homeless, there's nothing better than that. When you go to the free store food bank and you're packing those little boxes that you know are going to go home with a hungry child over the weekend, I mean, you count it and like, what, we did 1,500? That means 1,500 kids are going to get to take the box home. And it feels fantastic. So I'm a very big proponent of volunteering. And our young lady tonight, Wisdom, talked a little bit about her contribution and why she volunteers so much. Talked to her granddad, and he said she's going to University of Kentucky, I believe. So they're going to have a very good student walking through those doors in the fall. So it's already been mentioned, Warrior Student United, our Teacher of the Month, Mr. Al...
Allender.
Allender. I can't spell it out, Mr. Allender. And the Psych Health Clinic, those things are just... Those are off the chart, and we never get enough of hearing about our new facilities, how that's coming along, and Mrs. Hobbs bringing us new information about the technology and how we're staying on the cutting edge. It's just, it is a great time to be a Warrior. And whether, you know, sometimes it's easy to sit back and complain, but if you complain without offering a solution or a resolution, it just can only fall on empty, you know, hands because we don't know what else you want when we're doing something. And if it's not the something that you want, we need to hear from you and engage and come to the meetings and, you know, speak to the board. By no means are we perfect, but we strive every day to serve the students that are sitting in the seats and to make sure that the teachers and administrators, the staff, the leadership have what they need to do their jobs. And I believe, I say this in all honesty from my voice, and I think my colleagues would agree, Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour do their very best to try to work collectively to make sure that the monies and the things are financed, to make sure that our students have what they need. So thank everybody for that and have a happy holiday season. Board, an executive session is in order. We need one, 1501. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for evaluation of the superintendent and treasurer.
I second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Thank you. We will now prepare to go into closed session, and there will be no further action when we come out of executive session this evening. Therefore, I sincerely would like to thank the Waycross community for your service in videotaping tonight's board meeting. And with that said, I'll call the Wynton Woods City School Board of Education meeting for Monday, December the 12th, 2022 adjourned. Thank you. Take care of yourself and each other, and have a happy holiday season.